We should be able to unmute.
Yeah, hi. This is Asher speaking. Yes, I can also hear. I can hear Linda very well, but I cannot hear a single word that you're saying. It's like you're speaking underwater.
Okay, good. Linda, I'm assuming that was your only question, so I'm not going to come back to you. Asher, did you have an actual another question or a comment? Or was it just the audio?
Just the audio. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. I'll give another minute then for anybody to raise their hands for any comments at the this public commentary. Okay, not seeing. Yes, Joanna Benas. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm sorry. I missed the very beginning of it as the audio was weird. But I was attending because I had learned that there wasn't any assistance for the kindergarten classrooms and I was surprised to be learning that. So sorry, I'm not used to this format. I apologize if I'm raising my hand out of turn.
This is the time to do it. That's not on the schedule this evening. So Joanna Benas and you obviously live in Norwich, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So I'll turn to Sean. I don't believe we have not had any educational assistance in the kindergarten classrooms, right?
No, no, we do not have any educational assistance in the kindergarten classrooms. We have last year when we couldn't hire for educational assistance, we decided to have smaller class sizes. We have three kindergartens of 11 students each and that's the new educational assistance that we have been advertising for. I'm going to hire since.
All right, Joanne. Thank you. Leslie Fisher, I see your hand. Please say your name again and where you live. She'll be able to unmute.
Yep. Hi, Leslie Fisher. I live in Norwich and I also am echoing the same concern about kindergarten classrooms this year without educational assistance. And I just want to echo Joanne's concern about the three classrooms and the teachers that are alone with all the students. And I 100% am behind our teachers. Our kindergarten teachers are awesome. I just think that they might need some more support.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'll just echo what Sean said that we did take that into account last year unless what the class sizes are at 11. All of our, yes. Any other questions? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to move down our agenda this evening and the next up is the PTO report. I'm not sure if we have our co-chairs on this evening. If we do, please raise your hand to speak to the PTO. Okay, I don't see any. I am certain there is good work going on. No, I'm sure you've had a meeting since the last.
We hear everything. Tomorrow night, I was.
Any events in between the last meeting that's when it took place? Well, the candy drive obviously took place. I'm sure that was very successful.
We had just done back to school.
Okay.
Maybe five months.
Yes.
Did this here, there, drive two times.
Well, as always, thank you to the PTO for the support they provide. And as Sean mentioned, there is a meeting tomorrow. Is it even here?
Seven PM in Norwich.
Seven PM in Norwich and for those who are interested in the development. All right, with that, we can move into our business with foreign discussion. And our first item up is a playground update and we do have a guest potential this evening. Did you want to introduce it, Sean, or should I transfer you to?
Well, I guess I would say that Katie Corvair has been leading the playground initiative, looking at what we have, what makes sense for kids in our school. Put together a committee that has parents, staff members, sense of the book for children and has worked together a plan to put back. Katie's good.
And Katie, like I said, we've got about seven people on one, so I can share your slides here. Just on the other side.
Let's start with the actual design, which is not such a plan.
Katie, you should probably be in your.
Close to the hour. So I think Tom was pulling up the concept plan and I think can the board members see that as well?
Yeah.
Should we attach in bold dots?
I know. We do have it in bold dots. I was just checking to see if it was. They should be. See, actually, can you see the shared?
Yeah, I just asked if you could give us.
Okay.
Great. So we hired Sashi Mizner, who is a landscape architect, actually located in Maine, who's done a number of playground designs around New England. She was recommended to us after we went through a number of different sources as someone who really kind of tries to keep the natural landscape and also works to create structures and designs that are low maintenance. I think two or three years ago, when we first met, we actually met pre-COVID as a group and then COVID happened and we shut down for a little bit, but there were a couple of us who went on-site visits to area playgrounds just to kind of get some feedback and see what worked, what didn't work. And the committee really wanted to stick with the natural design and that's how Sashi's name kind of came up and showed us that she really was focused on that. There was another group that came to present to the committee as well, but Sashi seemed to fit our main objectives a little bit better. And we talked to lots of different places who've done these types of playgrounds and the feedback is try to keep it as low maintenance as possible. Also, according to Tony, when you think about like the upkeep, yearly upkeep, want things that are going to be solid, made of materials that are going to hold for a long time, preferably not wood. So it's a little tricky when you want to do that and keep it looking natural, but Sashi did a really nice job of presenting and creating this plan for us. And, you know, I don't want, I don't have to go through detail by detail. It's there for people to look at. I've shared it with the staff who have been really impressed with what it looks like. The kids, when I show, I haven't shown all of the students because I don't want to say, you know, the idea of time when it could happen. I don't want to get anybody really excited about it, but they, they were impressed with what Sashi was able to come up with, with the space available. So quite a few accessible items as well. There's a big swing that is wheelchair accessible. There's also a spinner that is totally wheelchair accessible. And we also had Sashi price out in the neck sheet. I'll show you that. Some ported place. Round material instead of wood chips, just to allow for easier access and also for less upkeep maintenance wise. It is more expensive upfront, but in the long run.
who's done a number of playground designs around New England. Uh, she was recommended to us after we went through a number of different sources, um, as someone who really kind of tries to keep the natural landscape and also works to create structures and designs that are low maintenance. I think two or three years ago, when we first went, we actually met pre-COVID as a group, and then COVID happened, and we shut down for a little bit, but there were a couple of us who went on-site visits to area playgrounds just to kind of get some feedback and see what worked, what didn't work. And the committee really wanted to stick with the natural design, and that's how Sashi's name kind of came up and, um, showed us that she really was focused on that. Um, there was another group that came to present to the committee as well, but Sashi seemed to fit our, um, main objectives a little bit better. And we talked to lots of different places who've done these types of playgrounds, and the feedback is try to keep it as low maintenance as possible. Also, according to Tony, when you think about like the upkeep, yearly upkeep, want things that are going to be solid, um, made of materials that are going to hold for a long time, preferably not wood. So it's a little tricky when you want to do that and keep it looking natural, but Sashi did a really nice job of presenting and creating this plan for us. Um, and, you know, I don't want, I don't have to go through detail by detail. It's there for people to look at. Um, I've shared it with the staff who have been really impressed with what it looks like. The kids, when I show, I haven't shown all of the students, because I don't want to say, you know, the idea of time when it could happen. I don't want to get anybody really excited about it, but they, they were impressed with what Sashi was able to come up with, with the space available. Um, so quite a few accessible items as well. Um, there's a big swing that is wheelchair accessible. There's also a spinner that is totally wheelchair accessible. And we also had Sashi price out in the neck sheet. I'll show you that. Some ported place, um, round material instead of wood chips, just to allow for easier access and also for less upkeep maintenance-wise. It is more expensive upfront, but, um, in the long run, really probably the best way to go. So many of the, it will look similar to what it looks like out there, but there's just going to be lots of different elements and place spaces. We wanted to create quiet spaces for those kids who needed some time away from, um, their peers. And then we also wanted to create some imaginative spaces, as well as some really active climbing structures, um, and spaces as well. So all those elements were incorporated into the design. The one thing Sashi did mention was that we really needed to get an up-to-date survey, and Tony, um, facilities got right on that and was able to get a survey for us. He just sent, sent it to me about an hour and a half ago. So it is complete, which is wonderful, because then we can make sure, we'll send that along to Sashi. She can make sure that what she had gone with, based on a survey that was done over five years ago, matches up with the current survey. So we, the committee would really like to think about next steps in our coming to the board, just to try to see what, what avenues we have in moving forward with this design. Um, if you don't mind pulling up the next sheet, Tom, that's the spreadsheet. That kind of goes over the costs. And obviously, you know, this is preliminary estimated costs. Um, so you'll see there's a couple of different subtotals there. The first is the equipment, and the we-go round and the we-go swing are both the accessible elements. You can, the other, the musical area, you can climb up, um, to it without having any stairs. It's more of a ramp-type, gradual sloping access. Um, and then, so that's the, the equipment cost. You'll see there, the first subtotal is two seventy-six, four seventy-two. And then from line items eleven through nineteen are just surface areas. And then you go on to the structures, which are more natural elements and landscaping. Total of those, you'll see the bottom, the site work total. So obviously, this is a really big chunk. Um, but given what the current condition is of the back playground, the committee really feels like it's worth pursuing. I think if, from what I understand, it's a lot easier to do this in one fell swoop. Um, just to think about timing-wise and also the layout and benefits of having everything done at the same time, instead of having to come back in each year with different maintenance costs for surfacing areas and things like that. Um, I know there are options to do it, chunked out, and, um, but I think that would take longer, and we would prefer trying to figure out a way to move forward and having this be a part of budget or have it be a separate, um, a separate item outside of the regular school budget.
Can you hear any time?
Yeah, Q and A, Q and A.
All right. Well, thank, hi, hi, I have a question.
Yeah.
One of those online. So, well, first question is, you went to a number of local playgrounds. So did you get that budget from them as well, or was that more just to see what the structures?
That was just more to see what the structures were like and to see what the longevity was of those spaces and places.
My suggestion might be good to get some of those things. I've been told by my children who are no longer, if you grow out of playground age, and the line one is a particularly good one, I understand?
Yes, yeah, that was one that we liked to look at, yes.
I don't think it's that. It might, I know the costs of trees now because of all the, uh, issues with, uh, supply chains. I don't know. It might be a little hard. It's an important issue to have something in there. The, uh, the other question I had is, this is obviously the back playground. Are we looking at the front structure here?
Uh, we are in this round. I mean, that is something that we're thinking about, but we thought that starting with the back one space made more sense. I mean, I think that Sashi would be more than happy to look at the front too. Uh, we did not ask her to do that.
But if we could get to that point, when this structure is completely, I guess you can extend these costs, because it looks like roughly the same. And then ju, just with regard to the budget, you got the two seventy-six-ish, and then at the bottom is the thirty-eight thousand. Is it those two meters added together is the total? Then I have this, what is the fifty-five thousand dollar alternate that's referenced here?
That, that is if we decided to go ported in place for the entire area, which was suggested by Sashi. Like, if you wanted to make it totally accessible to everyone in the entire area, then that was an alternate, alternate cost. That, there would be ported place around the elements that we need accessibility, but it would be for the entire space. Because that tends to be what we would.
Do we have a timeline in terms of survivability of what's out there, I guess, as well as, uh?
This one is following.
Maybe longevity is a better.
This one is following the same path as the back one. I'm going to take this off. I would say probably the other. Years, probably.
So we did a, um, assessment, and we have a facilities condition audit that will be going on. Marion Cross is the first school that will be done. It'll be mid-November. So we should have a lot more information, at least by the January board meeting, just because we really. So, um, that's a part of the assessment that will be done. So we'll have more information on what their recommendations will be for everything. We'll know more by the early January. We'll know more, or by early January, about a whole section out here and what may or may not need to happen.
We don't think that the cost savings are doing both the same as one, which was, you know, I don't really want to add. Another two hundred fifty thousand dollars to pass them. Uh, do you have any idea what the savings would be for these?
I'm not familiar with this kind of playground equipment. I'm more familiar with the more conventional playground equipment, um, built.
I guess the savings you plan on.
Probably from the.
It's not under the structure.
From the groundwork, because you already have the contractor with the equipment here. Um, I did have a question. What does ported in place mean? Because there's not really any, um, do you know? It's like, it's not, it's a little bit rubbery.
It's the rubber medium, okay, yeah, yeah. That's why it's so expensive. Exactly.
Other questions in the audience?
Yeah, um, was just wondering, I know there's been a call, especially during the pandemic, that kind of beyond that, for outdoor classroom space.
Yeah.
And I just was wondering, is that what the seating area is? Or is, was that not part of what you all were looking at, as making this a classroom space? I just, I, I don't know how that plan and the work that that committee's doing is fitting with this.
So the seating area is actually already out there.
Yeah.
That's the part that's already out there. There is not really a plan to have this be an outdoor classroom, though I do think that teachers will want to use, especially like the maker space and the sand area towards the front of the building, a little bit more.
Okay.
Um, just because it's going to be a lot nicer for them to use, and I think the kids are going to be more interested. Um, I think, I do think those classroom teachers who already use their outdoor spaces will continue to use those outdoors.
That are out, that are out there. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure how the, how the interplay is going to happen.
Oh?
Can I deal with all, what would your timeline?
Um, it would be amazing if we could have a date beginning next year to start. And, you know, but that's, you know, hopefully a wish and dream, but I, I would, it would be sad for me to know that, like, some of the third graders, for example, might see this design and then never actually get to experience it, you know?
And then what proportion are you looking to, looking to set more vertical pushing, and would be.
That's what I, I would love to put all of it in more article, but, um, I think the PTO, the members of the committee that we have are gung-ho and excited to do some fundraising. We did do fundraising for the swings out front, and I think we're a little bit more. We, we were hoping for a little bit more, I guess, you know, the fundraiser, we did use some fundraising money to get this design done, which was wonderful, and it's a great starting point. And I think having the design is a great place for people to look to and say, okay, let's focus on this one piece of equipment. It gives them a visual of what they're raising money for, so perhaps there would be more of a, just to get things going for people. But, um, it'd be amazing if more, if we were. One thought, too, we were thinking as a committee, well, if they could do, if there could be a large more article for most of it, then maybe we could fundraise to make sure that it's accessible, like the ported place service aspect of it.
What's it going to take, you know, to put up the learn article out there? How, how does that work from there? Can you tell me further, please?
Yeah, so we would consider it as part of the budget process, uh, with the budget committee, and, uh, and that's what we're looking at for the possible subject. So you would have the budget as a whole, which would wrap in obviously the operations of the school, plus teachers contract, subs, project contract, and then separate from that, you have two other items, potentially two other items to go on. This would be one, uh, and then our separate system as well. And, uh, I think it would just be my, uh, a boat of the places.
The, um, to that last point, so with, uh, without the ported place, and I may not be using the correct terms there, would the, would the playground be ADA accessible?
Yes, but there's a big difference between ADA accessible and like really being easy to use for people who, uh, have wheelchairs. So like, I think wood chips, for example, count as ADA accessible, but when it comes to snow and other, or other elements getting in the way of those wood chips, it makes it a lot harder. Whereas a ported place surface, it's solid, and you can shovel it and get rid of any, um, instructions.
So the, the proposal without the ported place meets the minimum requirements for accessibility?
Yes.
Okay. The second question I have is, how are playgrounds sized? Like, how do, would this one meet like a certain number of concurrent students?
That's a great question. I, I don't know the answer to that. Um, you do advise for a, for a child?
There's a book I can share with you about, um, playgrounds.
And so with that answer, then do we know where this proposal stands as far as like the number of concurrent students that could?
Sure, Sashi would, yes, she should.
I can ask.
Yeah, I'm curious if we're gonna, if we're going to start to do a playground, like, I would, I, I guess I would kind of want some confidence that it could handle the number of students that we plan on, you know, going to be out there and given.
A quick Google search says seventy-five square feet per child.
It's, it's based on square foot. It's similar to when you do a classroom.
Yeah.
It's on square foot. Was this designed geared towards a certain age group? I don't remember.
Yeah, yes. There was, there were some elements. She tried to incorporate different elements based on age group. So there, the, um, sand play area and the, um, mud kitchen area, that's more for the pre-K, K, one set. Now, I know pre-K, I'm not really sure if they'll be able to, just because of the different requirements, if they can actually access that area, that's unclear to me, based on those regulations. Um, but it was aimed at the younger set. And then there's also, will still be the blacktop and some of the other climbing elements that are aimed at the older set.
Looking at this as long as we will.
Okay. Sure.
So I think just a suggestion, then maybe, um, for the chair, like for the next meeting, could we just double-check the, the size of the playground based on the number of kids, or just make sure we're, you know, we're looking at where, that we're in the right ballpark here for the students in there. And, I, I mean, also curious to know whether it could handle, um, if enrollment goes up, and I would say based on our budget meeting the other day, and looking at the kids that were slated for the pre-K program, it looks like enrollment could increase over the next several years, just that maybe the playground is sized accordingly.
And, and I did look up the Vermont side. It is seventy-five square foot for Vermont elementary schools. Um, just one other question. I know that drainage is a big issue around here, and I, I'm assuming that you all considered that.
Yes, that was a huge discussion, how we have our own natural mud kitchen.
Yes, we do.
Near the sugar shack, and that's why the sand play elements are, um, if we look back at the design, are kind of near where that drainage, and she even put the drainage bridge, she put, built in a little drainage bridge that, um, I, we constructed.
I was assuming that you guys were well aware of that and had taken care of it, but it felt worth saying out loud.
Yeah, no, thanks.
And I'm just, my last question, too, is that the playing courts will not be affected by this design?
Correct, the playing courts.
Were they just recently re, um?
Um, I, I think they're still.
Related to me, but not even a lot.
No, we seal, we sealed, we seal every two years, we still, we hack. Um, but I think we were waiting to find out what was going to go on with this, before we decide whether or not we were going to completely re-surface, or whether these were slated to come here.
So those would be there as well as the existing swings are, would still stay. That was a little bit in consideration, too, of the property boundary line there.
Any other questions?
We're, we're, we have conversations with Tony to understand what, um, would this add to increase maintenance costs in the out years after it was done in the early bit? Punchural, I mean.
He's on our, he comes to our meetings, and I think he said, like, no matter what you do, there is going to be some upkeep based on the discussions we've had with other schools, as well as the design that, the designs that we've presented. This seems to be the most low maintenance, and as well, the equipment seems to be much more, um, able to survive wear and tear. It's not wood, you know, that's the big thing. But there, no matter what, there is going to be some maintenance costs.
Other questions, any questions from the attendees? Not seeing any. So would you, when you're back, answer to the, um, seventy-five square feet, but we didn't have it in there?
I can talk to assumption.
And Sashi knows, I would just be interested to hear, um, Sashi's perspective, that, uh, you know, we will look at the front playground too, not that that's an option, but just interesting to know if there's significant savings approaching. I guess the rest of the stuff over there, I don't know, I was going to try to, anyway, I'm thinking about the drive, but Gerard raised it, and that's what I'm trying to do this. Uh, I have had one hand raised since, so, uh, Joanna, you should be able to unmute now. Again, your name, please, and where you live.
Uh, hi, Joanna Benas, and I live in Norwich. I was just wondering for the project, um, who is currently on the project team?
Okay, I hope I don't forget. Okay, it's, um, myself, uh, Jen Newberry, Enrique Paletta, Tony, Dagle, our maintenance person, Sean, principal. We also have Bree Swenson, the rep director, Kristen, I was mistaken. Uh, yep, Kristen Ford, uh, if we go, um, I can't remember how to pronounce her last name. She works over at the Norwich Nursery School and has two students, well, actually, one's in middle school now, but one's in fifth grade. Um, and then Christina Affila, who has two students here, and, um, and Annie Poehn, who also has two students here. I think, I think that's it.
All right, any final questions? Joanna, you have a quick follow-up?
No, sorry, my toddler hit the button.
Okay. How long are you going to, thank you. All right, well, thank you, Katie, very much, and thanks to the, uh, committee who's been working so hard on this with you. Um, and, uh, so I guess we'll look for, I don't know that you necessarily need to come to the next meeting, but if you could.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just give you that. Sure.
Findings, and if any, if there's a question between now and then, I'll, Katie and Sean for that as well.
Thanks, Katie. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up on our.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the after-school program.
Okay, so I am at a Zoom call with Emily, who I think is the director of IMS this afternoon, and she was able to answer all my questions and made me feel really confident in the program. I know there had been some questions last time about how many rooms would be needed, how many students could be accommodated and things like that. And she clarified that she'd be perfectly happy operating just out of a multi-purpose room. I don't know how much that gets used directly after school or if that would be available to her. But she said they need a room to be licensed by the state as a sort of a home base. And that room is going to dictate how many students can be in the program. She said it would need a minimum of about twenty students to run and she could take probably a maximum of sixty or seventy-five.
Sixty, sorry for chat, sixty, seventy-five if on the.
No, but just in the multi. All of the multi. She said there was enough space in the multi to have different project stations there. I asked her to talk about a typical day, just to give a little bit more detail since she hadn't given much in the last presentation. And she said that every day starts with touching in a home base, checking the kids in, you get everybody settled and then they take them outside for snack and play, we spend a bulk of their time outside and then return inside to do some sort of stem oriented activity. She said she can, you know, sort of change to accommodate different grade levels and she'll have them being paused by age to accomplish and, you know, never has to do an activity, it's always optional. She's got a solid plan. And she said they come in basically with a mobile cart. So I said, you know, the multi's often occupied right until school gets out. She said some orders, they can just roll in and be ready to go. They would charge three hundred fifty bucks a month per child. It's full, there's no options for picking your days, it's just full day, full time. I did talk to her about the fact that the town pays to use the school space, so I don't think ethically we can just give it to them for free. I did do back of the envelope calculations based on the number of hours in the MOU for the town and the price that they pay. And based on that, I would suggest that we would charge in between three and four thousand dollars for the school year as a space rent, which is approximately the same rate of about six seventy per hour if you just. And she said she would be totally amenable to that. It would only raise the base rate for each child. They do offer scholarships. Application and attendance is sort of a black box. You apply through the IMS website, so we would not have any, the school would not have any say in who applies or who attends. She did say they would take the current IMS students first and then also families following that, families who had already expressed interest to her. And then after that point, it would be general population. She said she'd be happy to work with you and identify families who have greater need or who may need scholarships in order to attend. So she would definitely refer to the knowledge of the school. I think not only missing, so I feel very confident that this would be a viable aftercare option. I think the only missing piece for me is that I haven't yet tracked down Donna, the student, to talk to her about how she feels. But I do, I hope that it does contain within the room. And Emily said their teachers will collect and remove thrash, so there should be nothing extra for Donna to have to deal with apart from extra napkin usage or whatever. I think it would be good to proceed with this pending Donna's willingness to try it out. Emily did say it would take what, four to six weeks to get the essential from the students. I think I would bring it to you and see your opinions to see if you could get Laura's involved to drive an MOU and talk about.
Did you listen to some follow up to any?
Yeah, I just sent an update to you and Lily about the conversation I had with the Norwich daycare, childcare center. I always forget what their official name is. And they just spoke to me about the program that they currently offer. It's in the congregational church, it's kindergarten through second grade. They have a maximum of eighteen that they can serve. They've been capping it at fourteen due to Vermont regulations that if you have a room with ten students in it, you have to have two adults in that room. And they actually have staffing issues. They have been able to have a full-time teacher with no problem. And they have not been able to hire a assistant, sounds familiar, an assistant teacher on a full-time basis. So they rely on darkness students, which works nine to five percent of the time, but doesn't always work. And so they just have been trying to keep the numbers a little bit lower than their max. They have a waiting list of ten to fifteen people at all times. They would love to offer third through sixth grade, but it would require a bigger space. And again, they fear that they would run into staffing issues. And so I think that, I know that Montessori has said that they don't anticipate any staffing issues.
She said they're good to go. They have excess staff right now.
Which is, I just find that phenomenal because that is not what anyone else is experiencing. So I'm wondering, maybe everybody should talk to Montessori about how they have excess staff and going forward. And then, you know, just sort of talk to them. I did not talk to the director, I talked to someone else there. Have not been able to reach the director about how they would feel about having, you know, a program literally across the street from what they're offering. And, you know, their perspective was like, we have kids on a waiting list, if childcare is an issue, if we can get more kids served, that's for the greater good of the entire town.
Did you get any more from staff and the ones who are always in?
I didn't because if we're not using teacher rooms, I didn't think it was necessary.
And just historically, that reminds me, the other thing that they, that the childcare center said is that when, they, a while ago, when my kids were here, had a program that used teacher's space here. And that eventually did not work. It worked fine for a while and then it just ran into too many conflicts and problems. And, you know, it wasn't the teacher's fault and it wasn't their fault, it just was what it was. And so that's why they had to move first to the Episcopal church next door and now they're in the congregation church. So just, it feels like if historically that was a problem, we should be aware of that in case we do use teacher's rooms to make sure it doesn't become a problem again.
I think she, Emily is happy to be contained within the room. It did not sound like she needed more and more space because the multi is.
Yeah, I know that multi soon can fit close to three hundred people for the website, sixty.
So it would be a ten to one ratio if you have six staff there for sixty kids. I think if you're fitting, I think you could have actually areas. I think given that there's a childcare.
Yeah, I guess another thing I'm thinking as well, it's whether it's smaller. As I was telling you, I don't know. Is it comfortable that you would have or that Donna would have in terms of? Because I would imagine that there's still that, the wheel that I have.
Right now, we have a couple of grade levels to do. We usually use the multi to do fifty kids. About fifty kids. It's all about the management position. So if it's organized, advantaged, spread out. Did you inquire at all about if they would sell programs that are privately run and distributed against disabilities? Did they mention that they would take care of it?
So I did pause that question. And she said, she's a former occupational therapist and they do, they welcome students for their needs and disabilities. They have one job to do with injuries that are in schools. And they're able to accommodate that as well. She said that she trains up the staff as necessary to assist.
That would be my request to that. And the arrangement we make, you just issue, put in writing that it's distributed.
Unfortunately, it turns into private organizations, their own, it's special. Maybe be a hands-off transaction. Can I, any other question to me? So Sean had asked me to ask about the involvement of the administration if there's a child who acts out of a discipline. And Emily explained to me the Montessori method for doing the map out, just putting the time in with an adult where you're hanging out one-on-one with an adult for a while, just for shoes, because they're not ready for independence yet. So they will, they will deal with this one. She said the only time that they would be off school administration is if there's a health, there's a, there's some.
And so I'll come back to this, but you mentioned that there would be some outdoor components of this too?
Yes.
If there is that, did you talk with, that's a brief, for example?
I haven't spoken to Bree. So she was saying she would keep it to a flat play area. And I don't believe there are winter sports that can pull this out.
I don't think so.
So I can control place bosses and staff bosses and kids, they would be okay. She said she was flexible and could go into the back playground, just for ease of use from exiting the multi to the front playground. But there was no mention of permanent.
The last, and the last is, thank you for the quick comment. I know that Matt, Matt has a, that office has a specific. Any other questions? When it comes to liability, bearing hours of this to operate, who is responsible?
So they would file a certificate of insurance with the school district, naming us as additional insured. And then their insurance would be responsible for anybody within the program.
Including the students? Any concern on the addition of use of bathroom facilities?
I don't believe there was. You mean with regards to septic?
Yeah.
No, no. No, we actually asked that question. We asked of our engineer and I believe we posed it to Terry Shear. Because it's, you know, that many students is still within the scope of, you know, our permitted daily amount of bodies that can be used with that. It's not necessarily by amount of hours.
Okay, so we wouldn't necessarily need to pump any more frequently than we would. When we, this was the only institution that reached out to provide these services?
I believe so. I was not involved in the initial reaching out, so I.
But then conversely, we didn't actually put out that we're looking to have.
We had talked about this, but we're not actually looking to put out a thing, right? These people are coming in and coming in first and we're renting space. Anybody could come in and ask to rent a space and.
Yes, once we commit to an organization, it includes anyone else who's being able to do that.
With any childcare organization that has sufficient staff to do anything.
Not questioning that at all. Do you think that we would need to have a process for this?
I don't believe we would need to do an RFP process because we are not contracting that way. It would be very similar to, you know, any vendor contacting us, like the church, to rent space to on the program. And so I don't see it as any different from that because they're, they're a vendor. You know, they're a company, they're a vendor. If we were going to pay for it, you know, then yes, absolutely.
And I don't disagree with that. I am recalling though, I'm sure on the other side of the river, the use of gym space by different organizations that were competing or that caused some. Not saying that that happened on this side of the river, but I am saying we've been in that situation before. Right, and so I'm just trying to think ahead. And so I guess the part of me wonders like to what extent the, the contract with, with the school won't be. Yeah, so it would not be perpetual. It would need to be re-upped every year.
I would advocate for a contract if we can get this done between January fourth and the end of the school.
Yeah, you can do the renewal with renewal clauses as long as everything's been discussed, evaluated and is, is applicable.
And I, this is only for days when your school is in session. So it would not cover snow day or anything like that, only when school is in session.
So we don't have to specially open the building on a school day.
I've got some thoughts for next steps. Will you have one person for hand up in the panel? So Jocelyn Meyer, you should be able to unmute and again, his name and where he live?
Hi, thanks everyone. My name is Jocelyn Meyer and I live in Norwich. I wanted to thank the school board for the diligence and like thoroughness with which this process around after-school has been, has been taken. But I also just wanted to express like the fact that the lack of after-school is really putting many families under immense duress, including mine, and is really, it's not a luxury, it's not a privilege, it's a need for the many working families or the many like dual income families or in this town. And I just wanted to address a couple of the points that were raised earlier. I think somebody noted that the Norwich Childcare Center has a waiting list of ten to fifteen children. My children are on that waiting list and have been for over a year. And I wanted to point out that that waiting list is again, just for K through two because that's the only population that the Norwich Childcare Center serves for after-school. So it doesn't account for the third, fourth, fifth and sixth graders that might also need after-school. Somebody also pointed out that historically, other providers have had, eventually had challenges working with teachers in the school. And I just wanted to raise a point that Sean has raised in the past, which is that I think he, if I, I can't see any of you guys because now that I'm talking. But I, I recall him saying that he had spoken to a number of teachers who would be more than happy to volunteer their classroom space for, for the use of an after-school program. And, and I think we, while it's certainly wise to take into account what has happened in the past, it isn't necessarily a predictor of the future. And I wanted to just urge the board not to spend time on a pilot. I think the immersion Montessori program has proven its ability to run an after-school program in Lebanon. And there, at least from the families that I've spoken to, is a very clear need for this service. So I would respectfully request that you consider allowing them to open up to as many families as request this service and let them manage that process from there. It may be that there aren't sixty-five kids who need after-school. There are only thirty and they, and they start with that, or, or maybe they're only fifteen initially. But my sense from the families that I've spoken to is that once that option is available, there will be a huge demand for it. And so I would just really urge the board to, to move forward with them as quickly as possible. There, there are no other organizations that are really competing for that, that task from what I understand. And, and then I guess finally I would ask, I know that the SAU sent out a survey to families at the end of last year. And there were a number of questions in that survey around the need for after-school. And I would love to know if that data has been shared. And I would love to know if that data has been, um, shared and what the data was from Norwich on, on the need for after school and what, and how that figured as a priority. Because again, from my own experience, it is, it is a really, really, um, great need. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Is it, was that survey sent by the child care center? I don't recall being at SAU sort of unless, I mean, we did have components asked in the strategic plans. That was just last month, so. So, uh, we, we will have the strategic planning survey, uh, that is written down by, um, a town. So Jocelyn, we will have that posted on available. But I mean, I, I can tell you the board is very well aware of the, the need for the after school. That's certainly a good intention. So I'm not seeing any other questions from attendees right now, so I'm just thinking of our next steps. I'm wary of taking a final decision tonight, this four to six week process.
So it's a four to six week process once we give them the government, then the state in to start the licensing. I would, if I may, um, I would strongly encourage us to come to decision prior to the next order, and it was inconvenient to rent to get this up, right? I think we would more leave time in December.
And is it possible in state courts?
I don't know, but that's a favorite of mine.
Yeah, I think that should be done by the case.
Do they not already have licensure because they have the facility up on Route 5 in Vermont? Like are they not already certified in Vermont?
I believe they're certified in Vermont, but they need to add a lot of space. So they had to go into the multi and look at it.
Okay, so it's not for Montessori?
Right, yeah.
I got a little confused because I was like, wait a minute, they've been operating down the road for a while, so, okay.
Okay, so my suggestion to, so all the information provided in perspective, do you have that written out somewhere that we could actually post online? So even community could, so I'd like to see that. And, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to have a short, um, special meeting to address this. I would want to officially vote in, um, before moving forward. So maybe, um, if we could do that and then we can call each other here for a special meeting tomorrow, if we can, if we can.
Did you want a summary of what I just?
What you just, basically just what you, so we have something out there that I used to reference. I think we had some materials in the first one, I guess that you can talk to Karen later to set up a page on the website too.
You can, um, there's an SAU meeting coming up in two weeks that we could attach it to if that would be helpful. I'd be happy to. Slot it in.
Is it a seven o'clock slot for that?
Yep, we're not, the dressing room one is a week after, so we're good.
Will we, so, with Matthew about pricing?
Oh, no, I'll follow up on that. I'll follow up about the studio and pricing.
Uh, administration, um, questions, concerns, is it timed out, is it set?
I'm delighted that they have staff to do this. I think we took our time and listened to, did a great job checking on questions that came up before. Seems to be a huge need. I think if it's contained in the multi, the playground, that's why we did what we've been doing, a different way to do this, that proves to be great. I'm happy to have, to have a little bit of say about scholarship cases. And that's important too. It's really important to have a bit of success with a lot of students in here. Sounds like a perfect case.
Jamie?
The only concern I would have is just regarding the contract. You know, and, and that they have some type of process in place, you know, should they experience any problems with personnel. Because the students are still going to come regardless of whether they have an issue with personnel or not. So if we have students here on site, we, and we don't, and they can't produce the right, the right numbers of adults. We as a school district, no. We have probably 60 little children running around in a multi without enough bodies to even throw them. So that would be all, my only concern is looking, what's their plan, right? If something happens, you know, with personnel.
Yeah, in speaking to the principals of the schools and all the other methods, I mentioned children showing up with no teachers. That's great, so.
Uh, do we do a draft contract from the office?
Yeah, I'll work through that because I think it's probably, it may not be as robust as the contracts we would normally sign.
Is that something that I saw?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take care of that.
Any other, she's going to do a couple of comments. Um, so I'll turn it back to our attendees. I see two hands and first over to Wendy Teller Elsberg. And please just, uh, I'll, I'll name again where you live and please limit your comments to two minutes.
Hi, this is Wendy Teller Elsberg at 60 Church Street in Norwich. I'm the parent of two Marion Cross students. I'll try to keep this very brief. I echo everything the previous parent said. And, um, I wanted to share that our two elementary age children have been involved with IMS programs since its, its inception as a pilot program on Route 5. Oh, I think, let's see, Charlotte is now almost seven and I think that she was two at that point, maybe three. The numbers are foggy, but Emily could fill it in the dates, but basically, uh, we have never seen any staffing issue nor any blip in service in terms of quality or staffing, reliability, safety, anything like that. It's just a consistently fantastic program that I think keeps staff because it is a program with a mission and a vision to serve children and the community. And it's just a beautiful thing. So I'm really excited. I hope this works out and I don't, I, uh, Jamie, and at all, I, um, appreciate your caution and you're doing your due diligence, but I just don't have any worries. And I think we can just, you could just move forward in good confidence with the input of families like mine who, um, can speak for the, the absolute excellence and reliability of this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Asher, you should have the ability to unmute.
Hi, this is Asher Owl. I live on Happy Hill Road in Norwich. And, um, I would also like to, uh, thank, you know, Jocelyn for her comments and I, I echo all of those, um, about the great need. And, and I also, um, agree with Wendy that I, I have, uh, two kids, uh, who, you know, have been attending, uh, programs at the immersion Montessori school, um, for several years now. And, you know, I can attest to the quality of their program, including I have one fourth grader at Marion Cross who is bussed over to their after school program and, um, it's, that's been a lifesaver service. But it'd be great to have him, um, actually stay at Marion Cross, uh, for after school. And to, to echo Wendy's comments, I, yeah, I've never seen, uh, staffing issues, uh, like they, uh, like have been, you know, brought up and questioned about. And, and what I have seen is that if, if there are, you know, teachers who are out sick or something, the administrators, the directors of, of the whole school, they will step in. I mean, there's enough bodies around running the place that, um, that they seem to be able to be, you know, flexible enough with, with filling their, uh, their, their staffing and, and immediate staffing crunches. Um, I, I, I think they build in a lot of redundancy, uh, into their programs. You know, sometimes I, I, I walk into pickup and there's, you know, five or six kids and there's three adults. And, you know, that's just, that's just how, how they're running. So I, I, I also don't thi, I, I don't think they'll have, uh, staffing issues for running their program. If they say they can do it, I, I'm sure they can do it. But yes, I thank the board for their diligence on, you know, getting all the questions answered and figuring out all the, all the logistics. And, um, I hope we can move forward. Thanks.
Josh. All right, with that, I do want to move on here. I think we've got our thoughts on March 11th. We'll confirm, uh, I will with everybody here for a special meeting and I think tying it into the November 15th, the SAU would be great. Thank you very much Lily for all the background work you've been here and Lisa as well for reaching the, the schools and all participating in the program. And thank you for doing so in such a manner because yes, we do know this. Thank you for that. Moving on to, you know, holding C on our agenda, which is the budget update. The, uh, budget committee as a whole, with, uh, that's where we met for the first time. I think it was just yesterday, I was wondering, but, um, just yesterday and, uh, talked with the administration about the initial proposal for the budget. It was very high level though. I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Business Administrator T for it.
So it's the first glance, uh, from all of the administration, uh, building all of the different pieces that fall underneath their departments such as special ed and facilities and maintenance. And then the school itself builds in all of the programming costs. The finance department takes care of salaries and benefits. So it's a joint group effort where we all enter data into, um, a single database. And then we really don't see it until all of that comes together. The administration as a whole, the department heads met on the Norwich first glance last Thursday. And then we made some adjustments and some changes, uh, before the meeting yesterday with the Norwich Budget Committee members. And again, the administration attended. I will advise folks to take a quick look at it. It's posted in Board Docs, uh, under Norwich Budget Committee. We've posted the enrollment and the projected staffing, uh, in the first bullet under discussion items. And we've posted the, what, it's the second draft for us. It's local budget only, does not include anything for Dresden because Dresden's still being built. It's also, you can look at it by object and function, which gives you different story. If you look at an object, you're looking at what types of expenses we're paying, whether it's salaries or, you know, um, outsourced items or repairs. And then you can also look at it by function, which is really by departments. You can look at regular ed costs, special ed costs, uh, transportation, things like that. There's also a written narrative of the significant changes overview. We, we also have another document we'll be posting up probably tomorrow that was done internally about the onsite programming. It breaks it down and shows the different increases by line item. And then there's also a facilities proposal document there. This is our second draft, so, uh, we're still working through a lot of discussions and questions that were shared yesterday. The minutes of the meeting haven't been posted yet. They'll be posted hopefully tomorrow. We don't have an independent secretary, so I need a minute to clean up and we need to pick those up. So hopefully we'll post those by tomorrow. Right now, first glance, we're up around 11.3% for an increase of about 750,000. We discussed some changes to that, um, that will most likely probably go into effect. But we still need to go back and, um, take another glance. So this, by my knowings is the final version. Usually we'll go about five versions before we get to the final. Final version will be brought back to the school board as a whole, uh, in January. And the budget books should go out and we posted online, um, the first week of December, ended the first week of December. That'll be nearing the final version. It's not final until it's ratified in January, by the body.
Yeah, which, which you're right, it's, um, ended February, December, so meetings December.
Um, I think the date for the books to be, so that the seventh is Wednesday? I don't remember what was on the timeline. I thought it was the sixth, which was the Tuesday before. It says the sixth, it don't say the sixth, consider that. Yeah, it's like that, budget books. Budget presentations, formal presentations. Yeah, so, but the, the books should be out, yeah, before, before your meetings.
And our next meeting is November 6th.
Correct, of the budget meeting.
Okay. Rick, any questions? As Jamie referenced, uh, the document 12, in, uh, this meeting, they are all posted to the Norwich Budget Committee meeting. Questions at this point? All right, uh, this is the time I will again encourage anyone in the community, uh, who comes up watching this on video or reading the minutes, that now is the time, and getting pretty late to actually comment on the budget, especially additions to it. So speak now or forever hold your peace. And with that, I will move on down our discussion list. Uh, next up is a donation for the Legos or products team. Sean, can you speak to them?
Yes, we had an anonymous donation of $1,000 to support the level 5.2. With the, it is to use that to pay for entrance to the competition to be included with sort of kids.
Yes, very generous. Uh, thanks to the anonymous owner and we'll come back to, who is that? A business partner, passion. I'll take, since we're talking about donations, I will return to, um, our gender review of the board members here. And you will see on the administrative content, the, uh, Norwich Women's Club Grant Award, Chinese speaking as well.
So the Norwich Women's Club gave us $2,000 to support the Community Reads project. So we Women's Club paid for our offer visits to curb. And it was some of the books that we gave out to families over our.
Uh, thank you to the Women's Club for extremely generous donation as well. And what I understand is that great. We will return to that as well in the, this production. Finally, as we do every month, we have our facilities update on the January 6th. And, um, the RFPs have gone out and come back, do yes, the one first. And, uh, interestingly, we've got some responses to that. And Jamie has posted in the public content, the RFP that, uh, did go out and, uh, which, uh, I believe did respond to in the public content, we don't know if you see. Anything you want to reference, Jamie?
Sure, I'll just give a quick two minute overview for folks on where we're at. So we sent the RFP out to four companies, um, representing five potential different solutions. The companies included the Clean Solution, Wastewater Alternatives, AccoPoint, Champlin Associates, which represents two different potential solutions, including algae wheel and BioGill, and Septatec slash micro, biomicrobics, uh, which are two different types of solutions. But Septatec is a division of bio microbes. The RFP was also posted to the district's website on October 20th. Everything, anybody wanting to, uh, send in a proposal was due yesterday by 10:00 AM. We did receive two proposals, um, yesterday. One came in from Champlin Associates with regards to the algae wheel, which had been, um, looked at by our March intensive students and reported on in the past. And one also came in from AccoPoint, um, who has also, um, installed similar types of septic solutions in Vermont. We've not had a chance to go. I think it's in, I think the one they just recently did was for a hotel and I think it's instilled. Completely, but we want to go on the table. Anyway, right now, we're in the process, because it came in yesterday and we've had meetings all day yesterday. meetings all day yesterday and today. We're in the process of trying to set up a meeting of the Evaluation Committee, which will include myself, Tom, our engineers, Jeff and Steve, Jeff Goodrich, Steve Ravel, Tony and Sean. So we will look through all of the proposals prior to the next School Board meeting. And we may in fact ask folks from both of the proposals, if we have other questions, to attempt. So if there are questions, we're going to ask them directly. And then we'll more than likely have a proposal of what we think may be our best option to discuss. I don't know if we would make that proposal at the December meeting or the first meeting in January. Or after the December meeting, we may discuss whether or not we have enough information between the two proposals to proceed, or whether or not we need to contact more folks. I think we could actually have that discussion with the Evaluation Committee prior to coming back from the next board. But we're moving forward. I think that in quick glance, they're both viable options for us, just different types of options. These are alternative, innovative alternative design options. And so we're going to look at it based on the criteria that was included in the requests in the document.
Before we go down to any other serious topics, Jamie, when I'm asked, the finish selection phase here, there are these two options that we decided. The, when we have the space for you to make sure that they're signed off on.
So that's a, that's a very good question. In early discussions with the engineering firm, it was mentioned that state processing, especially because there's a lot of new folks in different positions, could take a little while. So it would be, probably it would be our hope that once we can settle on a solution that we think will work, that we would start the process with discussions with them sooner than later. You know, it won't be completely a surprise to them because fortunately, when they held the March Intensive with the Hanover High School students, both Terry Shearer and Kristin Ashman, guess from the state, who actually is one of the permitting folks, right, with regards of these types of solutions, attended that onsite educational opportunity. So it's not completely, these situations and innovative alternatives are not completely out of the box, right? They're, they're things that they deal with and that we've had conversations with them already.
So I guess I just want to know about this comment. So if we get the, if the review committee comes to a decision via the summer meeting, like, and we brief it out, we both agree for that. It's, right immediately after that, they're going to split. So they would better, once we approve, they're going to have to work together to get it out of the way. Jamie, that's all right?
I, I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that question, yes or no. I would hope that that timeline would work for the process.
Would they be going to, like, both of them?
We could potentially do that, yes. We could potentially do that, maybe invite them to the December meeting.
Where they're just sending.
Or just send them the information. Both of these types of designs have been approved in the state of Vermont, okay? The part of this that is maybe different from other locations that have used these alternative designs is that they may not have the situation that occurs with our leach depths, where they tend to freeze sometimes. Not every year it's happened, but you know, it's happened a few, where they tend to freeze and they leach out of the ground. And so that's why it was so important to discuss a pre-treatment type of option that would bring any potential leaching of fluid to the surface, to bring it to a quality of water where it doesn't have any dangerous elements anymore.
Yeah, and I think that's, no, that it's leaching, but it would not be.
Right. There would be no dangerous content. I don't know, that's a good question.
That would be nice to find out.
Could it be funneled into the X-ray?
Possibly, yeah. I, all good questions, which we can absolutely write down and discuss during our evaluation process and follow-up with the comments.
Well, thank you for all the time. My one suggestion is that maybe if Terry is willing, if Terry's person willing, look at it before we make an actual decision.
Sure, sure.
To just send it along, that would work.
Yeah, just kind of following up on the timeline aspect of it. If we run into some sort of delay in, in this, is it possible to do a warrant? Like, will we have enough information to do a warrant article that is precise enough without being particular? And is that allowed? Like, just to keep the process, maybe, like, I would just hate for it to wait another 12 months.
I understand, I understand. I wouldn't suggest that just because the two types of designs are so different that the costs involved would probably be extremely different.
Having not seen that, like, if they were all within, like, $30,000 of each other, I was like, I would be comfortable rounding.
And I think that, and Neil and Tom, can you correct me if I'm wrong, because I know Vermont a lot much better than I do about warrant articles and needs. But I think that if that were the case, that it would be easier perhaps to hold a special vote on something, you know what I mean? If we get waylaid by a month or two, but we're still, we could still fall within the building timeline, right? That, that we could consider that.
Thank you. Just, I don't want to tear it down.
So we issued four RFPs and got two.
We issued four emails of an invite to invite companies to do it.
And the RFP was put. Or the other, okay, sorry.
That was posted to our website.
Did anybody, was it just a lack of response, or did folks actually decline to?
They did not contact that.
So no response to that?
Yeah, yeah. But, but in knowing, because we had had conversations about Septatec Biomicrobics before, because they are on the list of the state of Vermont and the native alternatives, the lack of their response could quite possibly be because of the size of our system. Small, small.
Other questions? Well, we will have a reporter out at the next meeting. And we'll hear from the safety of that too. So thank you for all the work and for getting the RFP together and out there and, and hopefully, thank you. I'm asking questions.
Are we moving on to other buildings and grounds?
Oh, yes, we're not done, I'm sorry.
Okay, the trail. You could do the trail. I had to, I see the other. Okay, let's deal with the wood chips in a second. Is someone there to rake them back in? Do you know why Tony didn't frame it when he put them in?
I don't know.
They spread everywhere.
No, I don't know.
And Vermont law seems to mandate that they be raked back in every day within that stage for us. And compared to that, has anyone ever proposed, like, how kind of these and grounds person just friends?
Yes, they have.
It just doesn't work.
Well, because all of the maintenance salaries, the manner in which it has run, not that it means that, not to say that's perhaps the best way to limit, but historically, all of the maintenance department's costs are contained within the Dresden School District budget. And so based on size, square footage, demand, numbers, other numbers, there's a formula, basically, where portions of the maintenance costs are then billed back to both the Hanover School District and the Vermont School District. And so they're shown in the Dresden School District as credits against the expenditures for the maintenance department costs. So none of the school districts have their own maintenance people within their budgets. But the maintenance department of, you have five totals, the director, there's the operations coordinator, and then there's three maintenance personnel. They are shared between the four schools. And so, you know, throughout a formula of time. We do have a maintenance person who checks on this building every day in the mornings, their first stop, and then also checks in in the afternoon during heating season. And has spent considerable amount of time in the building here.
And what about the lease care?
That's contracted out. It's contracted.
That's key, every night.
No, you can't. Well, we don't have groundskeepers on staff. It's a contracted service. But I know the leads are come down, so we should be able to do that.
So I guess, I guess my question for Tony then is what prompted them not to frame the wood chips?
I honestly don't know.
Because now they're literally everywhere.
Okay, I can follow up with him and ask about framing the wood chips up. They may just not have had time.
And I can add to that. One of the things that we, has been asked to list in our infrastructure facility, not here, the infrastructure is framed in.
Yeah, the other frame.
Doesn't allow it to visit the ground. So I think that that's a request that we try to get through. But such a wood chip is just a wreck.
And then turn it over, it's just too many wood chips.
We do that. We absolutely do, wood chips every single year at every location.
I was a little concerned because the kids have kicked out deep chunks under every single swing at the time. So, okay, I know you have to have some amount of wood chips.
Uh huh, yeah.
You definitely have to have the edges that are not.
Sure, okay.
And we want to do a trail.
Sure. So I was out on the trail today, and I met with Russell Herschler and his crew. And so they're making some great progress out there. Right now they're laying the crushed stone. And then once all the crushed stone is in, this is phase one. So they're going to use an upper crack in the wall all the way out to, I think, for phase one. And, and once they have the crushed stone laid, then they're going to lay the screened mesh material and then it'll find, find material down and compact it. He said we are on schedule right now. And this should be hopefully completed within another week, within a week and a half, possibly to, if we get anything. So, but I will please ask everybody to stay out of the forest right now while we are working on it, okay? Well, I think we should put someone out too. I know that we've discussed it, but I don't know that it's lined up. So I'll ask them if it's lined up about staying off of the trails that are under construction. But it looks nice. I mean, I walked out, it's not even compacted yet, and I walked all the way out to meet them, and it was, it was rather easy to walk on, maybe not compacted, not on.
Do you have any of phase two to talk about?
Phase two, we'll discuss in the spring, and that was to bring it from the thermal pool out to lower.
And that's, it's just the two. Great. Well, thanks, thank you for getting that done, getting through the DRB process. And thanks to Russell and the UV TA team for being so flexible and keeping us on a schedule too. So much appreciated, it's nice to see that, while they're getting going. Any questions from the board members on the last? Okay, no, it's only one on one. So let's move into our business forum action. We do have, we can do B through D by consent, and then we'll just do the two gifts separately. Motion, Lisa.
Move to approve items B, C, and D by consent.
Second eye, Willie, always a favor. You, I guess I should mention we do these things. And B was the approval of meters, C is the approval of minutes, and D is the approval of non-public minutes. Next, let's go to the donation to MCS LEGO Robotics Team. Lisa.
Move to approve with gratitude an anonymous donation to the MCS LEGO Robotics Team in the amount of $1,000 as presented.
Thank you, I have seconds. Willie, always a favor. Yes, thank you. And finally, if we want to go back to the agenda review, there's the invitation of the NWC grant. There's not a language that would do in similar to what previous ones.
Swerve, my last. Move to approve with gratitude a donation of $2,000 from the Norwich Women's Club in support of the MCS Norwich School District Community Read Project. Understand, it was a lovely visit, and we really appreciate the ongoing support of the Women's Club.
Second eye, Willie, always a favor. Thank you to the Women's Club. Now, let's move into Communications and Reports. First up is report with Chair. I, I will note first that I did not reach out immediately to the Select Board, Chair of the Select Board liaison, a Norwich School Board liaison position, as I understood that there was a change in the structure. So I did finally today reach out to Marcia Callaway, who is the recent elected Chair of the Select Board, and updated her on the discussion that we had. And I had emailed her previously. She said, "Sounds like a great idea. At the level that we had discussed at our last meeting, she will try to bring it to the next meeting." She was working on, we've done a metric, but we're on the, we're on the ninth agenda, but if not, that comes certainly soon. And then we'll work on establishing liaison both here and there. And as I explained to, as I wrote out here correctly, was that this board was interested in one point number from each board, going to each other's meetings and potentially having five to ten on each other's agenda for each other to work. And starting there. Did I misstate anything? Okay, good. Then she will bring that to the Select Board and hopefully as a way forward in our descent. Let's see, I don't think I have a lot more. I unfortunately did not make it to the Vermont School Association Annual Conference, which I regret because after this place waits, it's a nice opportunity to meet with our International School Association Chair, which was great. But everyone else here attended, so I'd be happy to put it out there. Neil, as the President of the ESG, you want to start with the open three of the conference? Were they happy with that one? Was attendance back up to pre-pandemic levels?
Not quite back up to pre-pandemic levels. One of the goals that we actually have is to try to increase attendance. So we're hoping to encourage board members to attend. So part of the challenge is I'm extremely biased when it comes to this, so I will not give you probably an unbiased opinion. But I thought that the conference went well. I thought the keynote speaker on Thursday, which covered a lot about not only how the students are doing, but the board governance role in how it affects what the board does to student outcomes, student success. And I heard from several board members afterwards that they thought that that was very pertinent and timely for the work that we were doing. So I think that was well received. And then the keynote on the second day with a group of students related to a documentary film that was done related to student voice. We had a chance to screen a portion of the film, a decent portion of the film on Friday. And it was, I think, very powerful. And then the panel discussion saturated with actual school students. I think it was very, it was too.
Nothing controversial coming out of the annual.
The annual business meeting went well. The one item that got the most discussion was the resolution dealing with public monies going into public schools, which was a result of the.
which was a result of the Supreme Court decision Carson being naked. That resolution passed in a vote of twenty-three, so fairly broad support for membership in saying that the folks feel that public dollars should go to public schools. And so we will see how that item plays out during this legislative session. This is a big deal for the state of Vermont. I am working on some educational material related to that because I'm not sure that all board members understand the situation that we've been put in as a result of Supreme Court decision. It is a complex issue. Based on historically how Vermont is, how Vermont funds education, particularly to what we call the tuitioning channels, those fans that do not have either an elementary or high school where they're allowed to send those dollars not only to other schools within the state, both public and private, but schools actually well out of state and even out of the country. So stay tuned. Actually, that reminds me, and that one, we've got, so the election is coming up in less than a week. At that point, we'll know who our senators and reps are. We might want to have them join us maybe in December, prior to the start of the legislative session, just to establish a sense of invitation and.
No, I was gonna suggest that too, because speaking of, there's five people actually.
And actually, I don't mean to digress even further on that, but the other big item that we're gonna wanna keep our eye on is there's committee work being done right now to entertain the idea of moving to an income-based education tax. So moving away from the property tax to an income-based tax.
Almost settled into a new one in the file.
Yes, but it was sort of mandated by the work that happened with the waiting study. And that piece got carved out and pushed forward. So the committee is meeting now, doing a lot of free work prior to the beginning of the legislative session. So we'll talk about that. As well to basic projects.
Good too. And that reminded me that I saw that the Select Board did release an F P for a contractor to do the term of the placement. I don't have any idea with that term on the B. Every town in the state is probably looking to do that as well, so it may be lengthy. We've already tripped the required M I T fourth last year, and I suspect they get another five and a percentage contribution, especially considering our sales during the pandemic. We'll see. I'm pretty sure that the taxation is probably significantly off. But we'll see.
Then I will, sorry if I can digress one final time, I promise. So I actually had discussion with some town residents recently. And despite our best efforts, the word has still not fully gotten around out there about the potential property tax rate increase here in Norwich. And so I don't know if we need to sort of redouble our efforts or, or what is the best mechanism. But folks still haven't heard about a potential thirty percent tax rate increase in the town of Norwich that will at least currently take place over the next five to six years. And so I, I'm a little bit out of the lost. I don't know what we're, we're not doing appropriate here or how the message is not getting out there. But clearly it's not reached everyone.
Well, I suggest we put another message on the list, sort, because that certainly gets people's interest. I don't know that we would want to, but the value is made to do a story about. Daybreak, students who are already, this is there, so certainly reach out to us to see what you can do today.
Can you do a mail?
Yeah.
After all the residents of the town, a one page.
We, we could, I mean, the only thought that comes to mind there is could we save a little bit of money by including in the budget mailer that goes out?
Oh, yes. Front page. Have a page. Put it in the front page. Absolutely. Great idea. Thanks to everybody.
The skeptics and doubters know when people actually read our budget mailer, but we can get it in the mailbox.
Listers and wrong news and daybreak.
And I think the principal, if we could have it in the principal messages, because that would hit people whose children are no longer here. Because I can tell you, I have had multiple conversations with multiple people and not one person, not one person has known about this coming down the bike.
No, that's a quote.
Yeah, it's more of a.
Norwich Times?
Yeah.
We could put an ad in Norwich Times after this quarter.
I don't know that a fine written reporter for God's eyes is publishing that too soon. So I may get some traction.
There you go. Nice.
Yes, I don't know if it's been published yet, but.
I went to look and I did not see it last week.
Okay.
Follow up as well.
And just one thing, because Neil is so close to this, but I just wanted, and I think Lily will probably back me up, just to thank Neil and his team for the conference. It was a lot of work and you could tell they put a lot of thought into it, so it was really helpful.
And I was going to point to, thanks for highlights and what sessions you brought to the meeting.
I did effective board meetings, and that was fascinating. And one of the things that I saw that would follow up, I haven't had a chance to look at it, is we requested people were sharing tips for how they keep things moving and how they share information. And Hartford, I want to attend a Hartford meeting because Coach Christie really impressed me with some of the things he was saying, so I would like to see them in action because I wasn't quite, didn't quite understand what he was saying. But that was really helpful. I can't remember the other one I went to, Equity, focusing on Equity, and then the full sessions. And it was just, it was just nice to meet other school board members and have lunch and just see people and have a chance, the interaction. I thought the keynote, she was spectacular, and the kids, the kids were really good too. So it was nice to see that.
This was your first one in person?
It was my first one in person. I got elected five days before we shut down. There's no correlation or causation, I'm pretty sure.
Good. And how was your experience?
I only got to go to the keynote and the business meeting.
No sessions left? Okay. Anything else? I don't think there's anything that's in that. If I think of anything, I will come back later. But with that, I, you may have noticed that Superintendent is not here tonight. That is because he was traveling to Washington and D C with a contingent from our high school principal, Julie Stevenson and Jessica Beadkins. They both together worked behind what ended up being award naming of the Hannah Rixwell as a Blue Book. Down in D C accepting that very nice, prestigious award. We do have an assistant superintendent posted to our board backs that Robin Steiner has provided for us and is very thorough with regard to a number of items that she's been working on with curriculum. Looks like six social studies teachers at M C S and R M S. A K two twelve, we have a language meeting at the beginning of the month. A list of math professional development for teachers in the K two five. Or negative receiving some brand new, lots of good math resources from another district. And we shared it with M C S and Ray, and I think is added something in the lobby in there. Quite a selection there. And she's continuing to work on the implementation of the online supervision evaluation of professional learning software frontline. And she does add a thank you, a big thank you to Shannon Howe, all for her work and help in that area. And Principal Ghana is to be commended for his work using. With staff under the guidance and observation using the system. So thanks to Shannon for that as well. And Robin's also working on a grant some recently for Spiteon Grant through the Agency of Education. And finally, she states that clothing and laundry are extremely relevant. Hope that that continues to be a good sign. And so good to enter.
Did you skip the?
Did I skip all the show? I'm so sorry.
I thought maybe it was on purpose.
It was not, it was not on purpose.
It was a well-written principal's report.
Yeah.
I apologize. Go ahead.
So in robust, we actually are at thirty-eight students. Some have joined us in second grade yesterday. So we are at thirty-six in pre-K. We were at thirty-five for a bit. We staged two spots for students who came in that may have had needs that were access by professional ability. We can't say that that marks a school that are pre-k at thirty-six. Best people. We have thirty-six students in kindergarten, fifty-one in first, thirty-three now in second, forty-six in third, forty-fourth in seventh, forty-eight sixth grade. I'm not going to read over my report, but I asked some different, some people who do positions other than classroom teaching positions, just to give a little report out there. So Ross McGee and Beth Hady talked a little bit about what they do with the coaching intervention pieces. Couple of things that they're proud of, they, they are doing a book study with staff that's volunteer. They have fifteen people that have studied to. More on math expectancy, what that looks like, what best practices for teaching kids in math expectancy. They also have seen a number of kits for intervention groups and did a new classrooms that are open to staff implement best practices in math. Lucy Hampton, who is our reading interventionist, gave a little update of what she's been doing. She too has started a book group. I think they're competing to see how they do. She did put her numbers in, I believe she's twelve people in her group, which is great. She's looking at the six ways to bring science and reading to a classroom. So one of the things that we're working on at M C S is using research and best practice. Where's the program? This is leading the way with that. She also helped with a number of assessments, many of the grades, to just see what fits or not. If we plan for kids. And Amy Vanderpoel, our new lead person, gave a little bit of information about what she's been doing. She started off a little bit slow, just kind of getting the lay of the land and figuring out what we did here at M C S. But she's celebrated in the last, in the last three or four weeks. She's been out and about with kids, doing things that could seem typically would have done a little bit more in some different projects, which is fun. And Greg gave a little update of some of the work that kids need doing at our school. Big part of which is implementing our new assessments program already. Just getting the training, coordinated with the staff. That is my interview.
Yes, it's nice to see. Questions for Sean? Yes, thank you. Thank you for giving additional information. My apologies for stealing over that. My bad for that. And now to the business administration.
I really don't have anything tonight. I actually posted the, the portal in the last month. Remember, we discuss budget, we discuss everything else. We discuss food service, which is.
Something's going well.
Crazy busy.
Got some good press on the table.
That's a really good press, yeah.
I see my arm.
I did see that. You're doing a very nice job serving that food, right?
One of our students, they made the front page of my article.
Well, yeah, we should tell them we actually did hire someone to be the food service coordinator.
Oh, right.
Down there. Yeah, Annie. And so it's, she's only on her third day and she's came back, so that's great. Well, we're working through some challenges because the volume of students participating is much larger than we initially had planned for. So we're working through all of that. We, we want to thank our teachers and all of our other staff here for being, you know, patient and kind because it's been a little bit disruptive here and there. So we'll get through it and it'll settle in and we'll be okay.
At least one of those. Every day is just like pizza pie.
No, this is every day.
Pizza pie. It's crazy.
And one of the challenges was the paper weight and the weight of the.
It's, I don't know, ask me to model. I'm still trying to figure out like some of the details.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for the work on the budget. That's obviously huge stuff this time of year. And with thanks, we've moved into committee reports, also thanks to Metro. We're heading to a mediation session tomorrow evening with the Norwich Community Association. And I think we're gonna have to, everyone joins in negotiations soon too if this goes. We'll chat to them at some point in the future. I don't know if those other committee reports, obviously, from Ad hoc, the school program. I think last time there's an enrichment community. And that should do it, since the policy changes well up in the U S A. We do have need for a brief, right, Sean? Very brief executive session to discuss personal and possible increases. So I would happily entertain a motion to contribute to executive session in the board backs.
I'll just keep going. Move to enter into executive session at eight twenty-one P M in accordance with Title One of Section three one three for the purpose of discussing personnel.
Two second by. Lily, let's do all in favor. Yes, good. We were here for executive session with a guided ten minutes according to the board backs.
Choose it.
What?
Guided.
Guided. Ten minutes. I think we can do it.
So certainly we can put wood chips. We may have to add.
Well, I just sent an email to Tony, so.
Okay.
Tim will give it to you. What do you think, Sean? Jig down and then lay them in?
I definitely dig down, sir. We'll be able to.
Maybe we spring for a rubber.
What's that?
Then we got pretty bad. Everybody who did it.
Omar says five years to reappraisal. They're booking out five years now.
I knew it wouldn't be immediate.
Right.
I didn't know it'd be that.
It's five years if we did it right now.
It should be at about fifty percent.
Yep.
No, it's only going down four percent per year.
But the appraisal won't matter much if you look to an income-based taxation.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. Let's see. We are back in public session now, so let's see what happened. And just, see, are we okay to start up again?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's go down to the approval of the FTE increase. Much emotion, Lucy?
I'll try. Should I, am I mentioning the teacher's name specifically?
Ninety has her.
Oh, oh, there we go. I got you. Okay. So move to approve increasing Solange Wickers' FTE from point two to point four FTE is presented. And I will mention she is the district ESL teacher for those of you who do not know.
Thank you. The second, Lily, all in favor? Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to our last bit here, agenda topics for next meeting. As we discussed, we will likely have a special meeting if you can attend. And I'm not sure I can attend that, so I don't know. I also know now that I am supposed to be on the road on December seventh, so I may do my best to zoom into that, but I may not be able to. I will be in touch with Garrett to let him know that.
He may be charged.
And I will see if he can join me for the agenda planning meeting, which I hope I could come back at my last November first two. So I will do my best to make sure everything is lined up, but I'm not sure I will be able to participate in that meeting.
Yes.
So just to, so not to throw monkey wings at anybody as well, but.
But go ahead.
Shut it up. It's bright enough. That I think that's, are you here the week after that?
I am back the week after that.
It's just because there's a, no, there's some really important issues. The week after that, Valens says Nina was providing. But I don't know if the victim woman is at best. Yeah, but well, I can't be in two places.
What are you concerned about?
Zoom is more, Jamie.
Definitely, and the budget information. I didn't know if you would want to try to have your full board there. If you want to go to the, do something the thirteen.
I'm going to do my best to attend, just maybe come up in a different time. All right. But yes, I certainly understand what you're saying. And yeah, the time is.
Wrong.
And so anyways, next meeting December seventh. Agenda topics for that, do please reach out if anything before the movement or anything first, although I don't accept agenda venture phones weeks after that, although we've had that. So we are quickly approaching our premises. With that, I think I will be back in two months.
Motion to adjourn the meeting at eight forty-three P.M.
Second by Lily, all in favor? Thank you.
You're welcome note taker for every motion by me and every second by Lily, so it's all good.
Well, Valens is still on, so thank you for being there, Valens. And to our other guests this evening.
Trying to be helpful to the note takers.
I am.